Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, May 27, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair, we have Bill Number 348. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to receive grant funding from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to assist in the city's emergency medical services efforts to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus and further providing an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $138,162.66 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 349. Resolution amending Resolution 493 of 2019, which had previously amended Resolution 133 of 2018 entitled "Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a three-year professional services agreement or agreements with Johnson Controls for Security Camera Integration and Support Services by Transferring Funds from Equipment and Supplies to Professional Services." Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair, we have Bill Number 342. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding to update the city's urban forestry master plan. The grant proposal includes an ask of up to $35,000 with a local match of up to $35,000 to come out of the 2021 City of Pittsburgh Shade Tree Trust Fund. Bill Number 343. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to receive grant funding from the Keep America Beautiful Public Space Recycling Grant in the form of 60 Clear Stream Special Event Recycling Collection Frames with signage frames, 60 cases of 100 bags a case, and three transport storage carts with a cash value of $10,285. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the Chair, we have Bill Number 248. Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IX Zoning, Chapter 915 Environmental Performance Standards subsection 915.06 Sustainable Development for Publicly Financed Buildings by deleting certain language and adding a new subsection 915.08 entitled "Sustainable Development for City-Owned Facilities." Bill Number 252. Resolution consenting to an amendment of the East Liberty Tread Planning Study and authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to take necessary actions to seek necessary consent for and if obtained to undertake an amended planning study as a prerequisite to considering an amendment to the current East Liberty Transit revitalization investment district boundary. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair, we have Bill Number 141. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street. Bill Number 345. Resolution providing for an agreement with the Fair Housing Partnership to provide comprehensive fair housing training to all relevant staff members of the City of Pittsburgh, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, the Urban Redevelopment Authority, and private housing providers. Training will include understanding affirmatively, furthering fair housing, reasonable accommodations, and modifications in general fair housing laws in an amount not to exceed $64,750. Bill Number 346. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and/or the Director of the Department of Finance and/or the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to execute as necessary instruments for the declaration of restrictions and covenants in favor of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority to permit the installation of green infrastructure projects on designated vacant lots, park sites, and rights of way as funded by Alka-San Grow Grants. That concludes the reading of the legislation. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, May 27, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays until further notice. All meetings will stream live on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comment. For those speakers that have registered and are waiting in the queue, please give your name and neighborhood. For the record, each speaker will be given three minutes. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are made or before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. May we please have the first speaker, please, who I believe is Ms. Crystal Jennings?
Good morning, everybody. Crystal Jennings currently resides in Wilkes-Barre, PA. As you know, the October 27, 2017 Consent Order issued by Judge Joseph James resolved in litigation concerning the Pennley Park South redevelopment plan. In his order bound all by the parties included in the City of Pittsburgh to publicly support and the mutual cooperation to facilitate the community's content therein, including the consideration by the City of Pittsburgh Council of legislation to expand the East Liberty Tread Assistant Area to a 3/4 mile radius from the East Liberty MLK Busway Station. We understand the legislation to amend the East Liberty Tread Planning Study so as to provide for the boundary expansion call for by the consent order. It's currently under consideration by the City Council, so that's why I'm speaking today. The consent order will recall the reasons for expanding the Tread boundary. They include the need to provide replacement affordable housing for the 312 apartments lost when the Pin Plaza South complex was vacated and demolished. The need to provide such housing in areas as close as feasible to the Pin Plaza site in the full radius around the property rather than only the east, which would be in case if the Tread radius remains unchanged. The need to provide mixed-income housing in the East Liberty, Garfield, and Friendship areas to address increasing development pressure and loss to existing affordable housing. So I would ask you guys to vote yes on expanding the Tread. We definitely need affordable housing for low-income renters and homeowners out here. We definitely plan on expanding, you know, co-ops and community land trust to allow our residents to have ownership in the property where they've grown up, where they, you know, built families and built just labs. So please vote yes on extending the Tread. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker should be Carmen Brown. Ms. Brown, are you Maybe she hung up. I did see her. Carmen Brown?
No, I didn't hang up. I was trying to. I'm having a little technical problems here. Okay, hello?
We're here. We hear you.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to speak on the Tread. Definitely, there was a court order, of course, that said that this Tread should expand, so we should definitely be following this court order. Okay? I don't know, you know, I don't know why councilmembers want to keep it status quo, but no, we need to make sure that we follow this court order. We need to make sure that this housing is expanded because right now, because of this pandemic, I mean, everybody's seen, you know, the need for, you know, low-income housing. And the housing that law and that capital is given, it's not the adequate housing that we need, you know. I'm speaking about, I'm speaking about the Pin Plaza people, and I'm also just speaking about as a housing advocate, that we definitely need this to expand. We do not need walnut capital to continue to, you know, get this money to benefit them and where they're at. Okay? We need to follow this court order and do what they say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Next speaker is Jennifer Haven.
Hi, I am also calling in to speak about Council Bill 2020-0252 that is scheduled for discussion today. I'm also referring to the court order dated October 27, 2017. That court order specifically stated, and I know that you guys have seen this court order, I've given it to all of you in the past, please, please read Section 4, Section 6.1D, and Exhibit D, and Exhibit E. It very clearly states that all of the parties, John came in for the developer, all four community groups, East Liberty Development Incorporated, Bloomfield-Garfield, Friendship Community Group, and Enright Park Neighborhood Association in addition to the city, and the city was very involved in all of the negotiations. We all agreed that the boundary would be set at 3/4 miles. The reason for that is because right now, the current boundaries, the half-mile, are bursting with market development. You know, suitable prices for affordable housing is going to be really difficult to find in that current district. Right now, the district includes the very heart, the very center of East Liberty, and also the, what would that be, the northeast side of Shady Side. That area does not need any more apartment building, and it would be very difficult for a nonprofit developer to find a spot cheap enough to afford affordable housing there. So we had all discussed it for many months. It took about five months. We discussed it. It's in the court order that we were going to expand from 1/2 mile to 3/4 of a mile. Expanding that 3/4 of a mile is going to allow us to address the sites that the nonprofit partners, the CDCs that I had mentioned, are currently working on to build affordability. You can find those in Exhibit D and Exhibit E of the court order. Right now, we have the five representatives that are on the housing committee. That housing committee gets to pick what developments there are. That housing committee is made up of members, one member of each of those community groups, plus Lindsay Powell from the mayor's office. Those five people are not going to put affordable housing where it's not wanted or where it's not needed. They're going to put it where it needs to be. The URA is managing this process with us. I have full faith in the URA and these housing committee members that they will build appropriate housing in the appropriate area. We're not talking about building something in the middle of Shady Side where it's not needed. So please, please abide by the court order and vote yes to the expansion on the Tread. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of speakers. We will now move on to our City Committee agenda, and would a clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Ms. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Kelsmith.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. The Bell Chair.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. I need a motion to waive the rules of council. If members may recall, we have our Declaration of Disaster that we introduced yesterday. However, we actually didn't vote it yesterday, so we need to bring it to the table today so we can vote it through. So could I have a motion to waive the rules of council to, so Bill 365 can be on our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Now that it is on our agenda, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is approved. That'll take us to our invoices. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. I do believe we also have P cards for approval today. Motion, oh, I'm sorry, we also have interdepartmental transfers approval. Could I have a motion for those?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Departmental transfers are approved. Now have a motion for the P cards.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That'll take us to Public Safety Services Committee Chair by Mr. O'Connor. We have new papers, Bill 348.
Bill 348, resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to receive grant funding from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to assist in the city's emergency medical services effort to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? None. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is recommended. Takes us to Bill 349.
Bill 349, resolution amending Resolution Number 493, which authorized the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a three-year professional services agreement with Johnson Controls for Security Camera Integration and Support Services by transferring funds from equipment and supplies to professional services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Public Works Committee Chair by Mr. Coghill, Bill 342.
Bill 342, resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding to update the city's urban forest master plan. The grant proposal includes an ask of up to $35,000 with a local match of up to $35,000 to come out of the 2021 City of Pittsburgh Shade Tree Trust Fund. In the event that grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $70,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 343.
Bill 343, resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to receive a grant from the Keep America Beautiful Public Space Recycling Grant in the form of 60 Clear Stream Special Event Recycling Collection Frames with signage frames, 60 cases of 100 bags/case, and three transport/storearts with a cash value of
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any conversation? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Land Use Committee Chair by Mr. Wilson. We have two deferred papers, Bill 248.
Bill 248, ordinance amending and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IX Zoning, Chapter 915 Environmental Performance Standards subsection 915.06 Sustainable Development of Publicly Financed Buildings by deleting certain language and adding a new subsection 915.08 titled "Sustainable Development for City-Owned Facilities."
Need a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a brief discussion. I just want to mention that there was a public hearing held last week, and what this does is this changes, this adds the city properties and facilities to the ordinance, the currently standing ordinance. And so any new properties or ones that, any new properties that are built or anyone that is going to have a development or investment that's greater than half the value will undergo the sustainable development. So I just want to thank Grant Ever and his team for, you know, walking us through this. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 252.
Bill 252, resolution consenting to an amending the Mayor and Director of the Department of City Planning on behalf of the city to take necessary actions to seek necessary consent for and if obtained to undertake an amended planning study as a prerequisite to considering an amendment to the current East Liberty Transit revitalization investment district boundary.
Motion to approve, but I'd like to defer to Councilmember Burris.
Motion to hold one week.
I'll wait a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Let's hold one week. That takes us to Innovation Performance Asset Management Committee Chair by Councilwoman Strasburger. We have one new paper, Bill 368.
Bill 368, resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, or the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance, to enter into a multi-year licensing agreement with Cyclo Media Technology, Inc., for the purposes of a poll inventory and audit specifically for the purposes of streetlight and telecommunications attachment inventory in year one of the agreement, and for inventory of other telecommunications assets in subsequent years of the agreement, and providing the payment of the cost not to exceed $768,346.75.
Motion to approve with a discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Strasburger?
Yeah, so since this is a multi-year agreement and, you know, a good amount of money, I wanted to just have the opportunity to discuss it. This is a partnership with a company called Cyclo Media that would audit through technology all of our, sort of, all of our infrastructure, including street lamps, kind of anything that's on the city street that has to do with, that, you know, that intersects with DOMI and innovation performance. So, street lamps and small cell technology and a number of other types of things that we need to be able to, say, retrofit our street lamps for LED. So this would happen once every two years, so it's a multi-year agreement to end in 2024, but it would actually only come out of the budget once every two years for the next, for the next four years.
Councilman? Thank you. Councilman, Councilman Coghill?
Yes, I had a lengthy discussion with Director Ricks, and as Councilwoman Strasburger said, we're going to need inventory of these poles once we do start, you know, accepting their antennas and whatever else goes on them. The inventory, from what I understand, you know, over six years is going to be absorbed by the cost that we're charging for the poles, which is still in negotiation. However, I think we are taking out $310,000 from old bond money to finance the first phase of this, so we are ready for it. And from what I understand, you know, that old bond money will be recouped once we actually start, you know, collecting from the cable companies. In doing so, I think we saved $70,000, I want to say, just by signing up early and getting them on board and started. Is that right, Councilwoman Strasburger? Is that the way you understand it?
That's my understanding. Additionally, we're backing off of a federal contract, so this is, that also allows for greater savings.
Yeah, so it makes sense to me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have talked before, as I won't talk at length now, about the preemption that some people perceive from the federal and state governments on the rollout of 5G. And I know that the administration has been at that table about trying to challenge what we are and are not allowed to do. So I just always want to mention to members of the public, we've had this discussion about small cells at the City Council table when we talked about how to do a permitting process in private property in our zoning code. But then we've also talked about how DOMI is working with the telecoms, and we're fighting basically over contracts about them trying to impose their rights on our city property, which is, you know, our joint property, which is the city streets. And so this is still a wrestling match, and so I'm in favor of doing this inventory because the fear is that the telecoms will be putting them up without even telling us everywhere they want. My first year on council, I think, we had an agreement with Crown Plaza, Crown Castle, what is that? Thank you. I always get it wrong. One of them's like a hotel chain, I'm one of them's a telecom field. And so I remember being adamant under Director Lamb, Deborah Lamb, that she wanted to kind of give them permission to implement, I think, maybe our first distributed antenna, small cells. And we attached it as the council to a short list of just 15 sites, but we are way past that now, and you see these small cells up all over the city, both on private property and now increasingly on public property. So I, and I know that our own assets have not been kept track of as much they should have over the decades, right? So we own some of our poles, for example, but we don't, we do not, we no longer own many of those utility poles in the right of way. And so I hope that this is a first step in us kind of managing our assets in the right of way, much more proactively. And I look forward to keeping track of this as we go forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'll just say one last thing. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I'll differ.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you. I just want to ask, since it's my first year, I just wanted to, you know, as I'm looking at some of these contracts that we, you know, put out and get bids on for some, for some of these audits and inventory, I just want to know, what is the reasoning why we couldn't do this in-house?
Would you like to call the relevant directors up to the table to, virtually, to answer that?
Yeah.
I know that Director Ricks and Director Garsis are both here and have been working on this lately.
This is Director Ricks. I can start answering that, and then I'll let Director Garsis also answer. So what they're doing is using, we have about 1,000, 1,200 miles of street in the city. So one is just simply a magnitude issue and a volume issue. So they'll be using digital imagery to initially gather all of the assets, and then they'll digitize them so that we have them in a very precise geolocated database that we can use through the GIS system. And then as Councilman And then as Councilwoman Gross highlighted, we do, that there, there will be hundreds, if not thousands, of the distributed antennas in the city. And so keeping those current and auditing them is something that's going to require repeated visits to the street to gather that information. So it's, it's really just a, it's quite frankly, too large of a job to gather all of that with the precision that we need in the timeframe that it takes.
Okay. Yes, the aerial shot that you're describing and how they're going to collect that data that way. That makes sense. That seems very challenging. So is there already something that's been started like years ago, how we have been keeping track of some polls? Like, how did we get to this point?
Yeah, we have a very incomplete inventory of the polls. So there are polls that that we own, our streetlight polls. We have about sixty thousand of our own streetlight polls. We have traffic polls, traffic signal polls. We have probably twenty-four hundred or more of the traffic polls. And then the utility polls, which we do not, those are not ours, but we still govern what goes in the public right of way as far as those goes. And there are, there are thousands upon thousands of those polls, so.
And if I can interject, this is Director Garsis. They, as Director Ricks was saying, we have the thousands of these assets, but we currently don't have the map precisely. So we have an inventory that says, let's say, we have ten polls on Liberty between the block one hundred and the block five hundred, but we don't know exactly where those assets are, the height and some other characteristics. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we get that information in a format that's compatible with our GIS system so that we can do a better job of keeping track specifically what poll. And as Director Ricks was saying, direct inspections or other kind of enforcement activities, you know, verifying that then installation of a, of an antenna system was done correctly and safely and the type of stuff. But that's, that's the level of detail that we're missing that we need to get throughout the entire city.
Okay. Well, thank you for that description.
Councilman? Councilman Cocke?
First round?
We're still on first round.
Okay. No, I just wanted to say, Director Ricks, would you speak to, you know, I know these cable companies, they really want to be around the stadiums and where large people, large crowds gather, but you're making sure you're holding their feet to the fire, whereas it's going to be equitable throughout, for instance, the South Hills where we don't have, you know, stadiums and concert venues.
Yeah, I may actually pitch hit that over to Director Garsis to talk about the digital equity program that he's leading and crafting.
Yeah, so as we are having conversations with the telecommunications companies, we've been, and again, this is where, if you look at the FCC rule, one of the things that it says is that it allows cities to recover actual costs. It doesn't allow us to price market, but it allows us to recover the actual cost. And one of the things that we're including in our program in Pittsburgh is an equity program. So one of the, it's, one of the things that we're working on is, as, as these telecommunications companies start rolling out small cells, us having the opportunity of, and this is where the data also becomes important, us having the opportunity of looking at where these installations are happening and identifying equity gaps and then being able to communicate with the telecommunications companies and say, hey, we've under, we've seen based on the data that there's a particular neighborhood that is underserved in terms of the quality of the telecommunications infrastructure. And by the way, there's going to be some projects, some streetscaping. So we really encourage you to invest in this area because, you know, the, the, the cost of breaking ground and remediating and all these things are going to be minimal. So I, I think that as we seen the impact of COVID on people working remotely, that the, the need for better equity around connectivity is, is important. And that this is an area where we're, I'm going to start building programming.
Thank you. Anyone else for a first round? Seeing none, Councilwoman Strasburger, second round?
Yeah, I know, I was just going to bring up the equity issue when it comes to, when it comes to street lamps as well. So as, as Councilman Cocke pointed out, it's around, it's around connectivity, but it's also around streetlight. So we know that people feel safer when they are, when they're in areas that are well lit. And this can also identify where the gaps are for streetlights so that when we're retrofitting them to be more energy efficient and hopefully we'll recoup some of the costs in that way, we'll also be able to know where more street lamps need to go for safety and for, you know, pedestrian comfort.
Thank you. Council President Smith?
Thank you, Councilman. I just, I'm glad to hear this conversation. I wish we had it in combination with the Learn and Earn Program yesterday. But I am glad to hear that we're talking more about ways that we can address this. I do think that there needs to be some additional information that, that we're sharing with not only the school district, but with maybe other people that work with schools that are outside of Pittsburgh Public Schools. Because we actually have a lot of students that, probably about the same amount of students that attend Pittsburgh Public Schools now that attend other schools. So I think that we have to have those conversations. And I really have urged the mayor's office, the administration to fill the positions for the Education Commission so that we, I think now is the time that we need to start looking into what we can do to help our, our students in our schools and our, in our city. But I do think a lot of this has to do with, when we talk about the cost for, I think it was one of the essential programs, I think it was like ten dollars a month or something like that. Ten dollars a month is still something that some of our families just don't have. And so I think it would be nice to maybe combine that with the Learn and Earn Program and, and how we're doing some of these things that we could really make sure we're getting technology really into the hands of people that truly need it. And I mean, I, I love all the PR, I love all this, but if we're not really delivering to our students and to our families, it's just that PR. So I'd really like to see us combine those efforts. That's all I want to say. And the streetlights go right along with it. Probably the same areas that don't have the computers, probably the same areas in the technology and can afford technology, are probably the same areas that, that, that need the street lighting. But I do think that, I, I've mentioned this before, when I worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools, I worked for the Neighborhood Learning Alliance, which back then was the Wireless Neighborhoods. Were they refurbished computers and got those computers into the hands, sort of like what Computer Reach has been doing in my district? The hand, getting computers into the hands of people that need it. But I think that we have so many computers in the city now and with the school district and with all these businesses, that there's got to be some collaboration here. And I, I wish I'd see more of that. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Councilman, one more thing. I just wanted to thank Director Ricks, you know, and we're not part of the negotiation process, of course. But, you know, we have to draw a line. I mean, they want something for nothing always. And if you look at comparable cities, we're really not asking for much. So stick with your, you know, guns there, Director Ricks, and let's get it done, all right?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is approved. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have one new supplemental paper, Bill three sixty-one.
Bill three sixty-one, resolution, amending resolution three ninety-four of twenty eighteen to clarify the appropriate neighborhood stabilization program reference.
You're on mute, Councilwoman.
So I motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Bill is approved. That takes us to Bill one forty-one.
Bill one forty-one, resolution adopting plan revisions of the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the twenty-nine twenty-six Smallman Street Land Development Project located at twenty-nine twenty and twenty-nine thirty Smallman Street.
Question to hold two weeks?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held two weeks. Bill three?
Bill three forty-five, resolution providing for an agreement with the Fair Housing Partnership to provide comprehensive fair housing training to all relevant staff members of the city, the housing authority of the city, the URA and the private housing providers. Training will include understanding affirmatively furthering fair housing, reasonable accommodation and modifications and general fair housing laws in an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Question to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I do have one question, if I don't see anyone else. When it says private housing providers, how is that defined?
I don't know. Thank you. Can we have, look, we have the fair housing people.
I figure if you're going to prove a contract for me, I might as well be here, right? So it kind of makes sense. So private housing providers are those that are not the housing authorities or acting as third party to the housing authorities. So that, that includes, what we do is provide a open to the public training that allows for any landlord who has occupancy to come and receive fair housing training.
So I know, Mr. Tare, you've, you asked the question, but so that would be non, in this definition, public meaning, you know, a government or an authority.
Correct.
Private meaning any private corporation, profit or nonprofit.
Correct.
So it might be a nonprofit, like Action Housing, or it might be a for-profit like Walnut Capital.
Correct. It's, it's a, because of the parameters that we function under HUD, anything that is not the housing authority or contracted kind of with the housing authority is then seen as a, as a private housing provider.
Thank you. I'm assuming this is also completely voluntary for the private side.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, again, we, we will make it available. We hope that people will, will want to attend. As it stands right now, it is, you know, it's completely voluntary. I would offer up, you know, in the opportunity to have a conversation with you all, that as you look at things like first occupancy permits that you may want to consider at some point having people who apply for those go through fair housing training and that you can do that in a way that's not a cost to them, so it's not seen as a tax or a cost to, to the individual housing provider, but something that would ensure that, that the community has housing providers that understand their obligations under the fair housing rights. Also, just ten seconds or less, throw a, a thanks out to, to all of you. I know that I've been working with, with you, Finch, to, to work with. We'll make training available to all of your staffs or anyone that you think is, is relevant in the housing space. And also a quick shout out to Dave Finer for, for keeping this thing rolling for all you guys. Just giving him a, just giving him a shout out because he, I know him from, from CDS, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Any further discussion from members? Seeing none, oh, Councilwoman Wilson?
I just wanted to ask, is this a program that's been ongoing? Like, is this a funding that we continually provide?
Yeah, so thi- this is, I'm sorry if I'm, I'm not supposed to jump into this.
Please do.
This, this basically revolves around your consolidated plan. And so if you look inside the consolidated plan, it's basically a five-year plan. And so each five years, you do the con-plan that includes an analysis of impediments to fair housing and then how you're going to address that analysis of impediments to fair housing. FHP stands as the, the only HUD, what's called a Qualified Fair Housing Organization that serves the city of Pittsburgh, quite frankly, Allegheny County. And so we've been doing these kind, this type of services for thirty-some years and then with the city itself for the last kind of six, six or seven years.
So how many private housing providers take, take advantage of this, this training?
You know, it's interesting, you would, you would think we'd get more on the private end because it's, it's available to them. It's really a push to get them out there. So we may get, you know, six, seven, eight, maybe ten at a, at a training at a time from private provider. Whereas, you know, we get the opportunity to get to the large public housing authority and get kind of all of their space or to the URA, which is, which is in within this to make sure that they understand. So the impact is broad, but unfortunately, right now, it is very difficult to get housing, private housing providers to participate. I wish they would because what happens with a lot of private housing providers, quite frankly, is they end up making a mistake. And for a lot of them, it's a mistake and, you know, I don't want to kind of cast people as kind of bad. They make mistakes, they end up on the wrong side of it. They end up with a complaint, quite frankly, at your commission. And then they get the train, you know, where had they gotten the training upfront, you know, it would be a much better space for them. I tell them all the time when I do these, I'm so helped, I'm so thankful that I see them here. Because if I see them at, at these kind of trainings, that means that they're taking proactive steps. It's not costing them, you know, they learn it. And it also means people are going to get access to housing that they otherwise wouldn't have versus the other end where they make a mistake on reasonable accommodation, let's say, and deny somebody access to housing. They end up in front of us with a complaint. We fix that, but we don't know if there are five, six, seven, eight other people who are looking for housing were denied. So it's really a good opportunity for housing providers. And why I say if there's a way to, to incorporate it into first occupier or something, it would be really beneficial.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other conversation from members? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is recommended. That takes us to our last bill for today, Bill three forty-six.
Bill three forty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and/or the director of the Department of Finance and/or the director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to execute as necessary instruments for the Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants in favor of Alcazán to permit the installation of green infrastructure projects on designated vacant lots, park sites and right-of-ways as funded by Alcazán, grow grants awarded to the PWSA and further authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and/or the director of the Department of Finance to enter into any other necessary agreements between the city, PWSA and/or Alcazán necessary to implement the grow grant projects for the benefit of the public.
Question to approve a discussion?
Second.
Thank you. I just want to say, these are great projects. We're glad that Alcazán is awarding these grants. I think there's not enough money from Alcazán awarded to green infrastructure. I wish we could increase it tenfold, but that is part of the consent rate and part of their budget. There's an exhibit attached to this legislation. If you're curious, there's actual specific sites already listed in Exhibit A. So twenty twenty-three forty-six dash Exhibit A. And they list the specific sites and descriptions of them. So, and you can see that they're really great. About half of them, maybe more than half, actually are in right-of-way. Now that I'm scrolling through and looking on my screen, I apologize. Every single one is, is right-of-way, but some have park or vacant lots in addition to the right-of-way at that location. So for example, in Councilman Lavelle's district, Center in Heron is, you know, pretty large installation and it's got it in the right-of-way and then some over into the property adjacent. I'd like to make an amendment because there's a mistake in this Exhibit A. So it's very small, it's just minor. It's, it just mislabels Council District for Polish Hill. So under Exhibit A, Madam Clerk, number five has it, and I'll read it aloud because most members or the public aren't looking at this. Melwood and Finland Street, Green Infrastructure Project. So Melwood and Finland is properly located in the neighborhood of Polish Hill, but it says in Council District Two. So I'll motion to amend, so that says Council District Seven. And then it also says in the following clause, it says comma, in the twentieth ward of the district of, of the city of Pittsburgh. So I'll motion to amend that, in the same amendment, that that's changed from twentieth to sixth. So the number two changed to number seven and twentieth changed to six.
Under the ward.
So I need a second and a vote.
Amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 The bill is amended. Any further discussion on the amended bill? Councilwoman Gross?
No, thank you. I, I hope everyone supports it and we, I hope we all get to see even more green infrastructure projects.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, this is a, a great opportunity for, especially my neighborhood or my district. There's a project that we have listed on this, on this sheet. And it's one of the twelve, it's the Woods Run Stream and Flow Project. And I wanted to ask about It's the Woods Run Stream and Flow Project. And I wanted to ask about the lot and block number, because it specifically is the whole, that block number is all of River View Park. And I know that the friends of River View have been working diligently on several different projects there. And I just wanted to know where specifically does this money go, this grant go towards?
Which project in the park? Let's, let's find out, because that doesn't, that's not very specific enough, right? Not at all. The other ones are all very specific, small footprints that are defined. So if we could follow up with them, we could still amend it in writing by Tuesday, if you'd like. And then, or if you just want to, you know, we can find out the information, and you can decide whether or not you want to amend it.
Well, I just didn't, yeah. I appreciate that. I didn't know if there was, yeah, I'm happy.
I don't have it in front of me now, but I'm happy.
I have it in front of me now, or, or I'm not sure who this falls under, if this falls under Domy.
Usually, I mean, the ones that, the, the projects in my district have all been executed with PWSA's participation, the ones listed here. So we'll just follow up and see who the point organization is.
All right, great. Yeah. Well, once again, it's just great to see this investment, because this is a park that's just had a lot of.
I, I know. I've had briefings on the erosion and, and stuff, and it's, yeah, hopefully we can remediate that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schlossberger?
Thank you. I, I was just, maybe I'm misreading this, and so I'm just having a little bit of trouble understanding. Is this something that we, a standard type of approval for this type of work, or is this for the first time allowing for grow grants to be utilized on vacant lots, right-of-ways, rights-of-way, and park land? I only ask because a couple of the projects in District Eight are, you know, have been going for many years now and have been assumed, presumed to be, you know, grow grant eligible this whole time for the last couple of years. So it would be, surprise me if this is the first time that we're applying grow grants to, to those types of parcels.
I can answer, I can answer that.
Thank you, Councilman, because I, yeah, I'm wondering if maybe the terms for the grow grants have changed.
These are just upgrading the agreements in certain right-of-ways, but we've done grow grants in right-of-ways already. We actually raised the cap, so somebody could actually apply for, it used to just be capped at a million, now it's up to about five, and we're thinking of raising it again. So this is just more a technical thing going through, accepting the grow grants and who needs to approve. As you heard the bill, it says Director of Mobility, Public Works, and I can't remember who the other director was off the top of my head, but that's the system. So we have done them in right-of-ways before.
Okay.
Just a new wave of them, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. That makes sense.
Thanks.
Nothing further, Councilwoman? Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I see Director Ricks is on the, on the call. I didn't know if maybe she could speak to the parcel number. Maybe I can just get my, my clarification now.
I can. The, so the whole of River View Park is, has been agglomerated into a single parcel. And so getting a, a smaller parcel number would require the, the, the separation of that area.
Subdivision.
Subdivision, thank you. I was, I was struggling with the word, subdivision of the parcel to get that, which I, which I don't think we, we want for this agreement. That, as Councilman O'Connor indicated, that one would actually be signed by the Director of Public Works. But certainly, we can give you a drawing that shows where this project is. It is not throughout the whole of River View Park. It's a very small project, but it is, the park is one single parcel right now.
Great. Yeah, I'm not interested in breaking up the park. I just into different parcels. I just wanted to, you know, which, which, I think, I think there are several entrances that are going to be upgraded. So I'm just curious on which one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just, just one real quick question. Is it specific to just the city of Pittsburgh, or is it outside the city as well? The green infrastructure?
So the, so the grow program goes to all 83 municipalities. This is our portion that PWSA applied for. So basically, we'll do matching funds with each municipality who can show that they're going to hold X amount of water out of the system for a grow, for a green project, and then we'll match the funds with the grow program. So if you're outside of the city, you can also apply.
Great. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Any further discussion from members? If not, I have one question, as Director Ricks, if you're still on. Will we be, actually be able to see drawings of the projects prior to implementation versus sort of the description that's in the packet that just says somewhere close to Heron and Center, we're going to take over a lot?
Yeah, we can share those with, with the respective council members, so that they can see what those designs are. That's something that's been collectively worked out with the multiple agencies that are involved.
Thank you. Especially for that location. I would be very interested in seeing it. I won't go into my diatribe about the previous green infrastructure they did there that, you know, I was.
We're familiar. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from members? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The bill is recommended. That exhausts our agenda. I do have a meeting announcement, which is to register for comment by phone. For councils' regular and standing committee meetings, please call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. The deadline for speaker registration is 9:00 AM. The date of the meeting, after forward comments to the clerk's office, email cityclerk@pittsburghph.gov. Is there any other announcement from members? Council President Smith?
Thank you. I just want to be clear, because we're getting questions about the terminal building. There was no vote regarding that today, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure. And if so, this is not final vote, just still vote next week. So I just want to make sure people know that, but I want to make sure that we're getting a lot of questions. And then I just really want to talk real briefly about what happened in this country of this week with, what's happening in Michigan. And, you know, there's just been a lot of things that we've been seeing, and there's not been a lot of talk about it. And I don't know that I'm the right person to talk about it, but I just think that, you know, we saw happen, and we continue to see happen in our country, has been really difficult, because we try to bring our world together, try to bring people together. And, you know, in our city of Pittsburgh, we know how our police work constantly with our community, day in, day out. And yet, it takes one incident and one, one bad officer to turn the whole world upside down. And for the African-American community, we know that this is not one incident. It, it's, it's a very sad statement of how they, a lot of times, they live and feel in fear. And I think that we've got to start saying more and doing more. But I really think the answer is, you know, some universal training for police officers. You know, I think that even though we have a lot of confidence in our officers, and my son is an officer now, you know, I, so I, I worry about the officers, but I also worry about what this means for our country, and what this means for people just every day having to walk the streets in fear. And I don't know what we can do, you know, on our local level. But I, I'd like to have some conversations about what we can do when things happen on a national level, because those are the things that are affecting us locally as well. You know, it shouldn't be that you fear walking down the street, or that you fear calling the police or having the police around. And I mean, as I mentioned, our police officers do an amazing job with police community relationships, and that's because the community also does a lot to build those, those relationships locally. But you can't help but see when it happens on a national level, that it has an effect on us here on a local level as well. So I'm just going to shut up, because I really don't know a lot to say. I just want to know that it is something that we do think about and do care about, and just don't know how to make sure that we express that to people.
Thank you. And I believe you're referring to the incident in Minneapolis.
Minneapolis, I'm sorry. I am. What did I say?
Michigan.
Yes.
Anything else from members?
So, yeah, thank Council President Smith for her, her compassion. Unfortunately, though, this is not new. There was a period of time, up until around 19, in the 1960s, all through the early 1900s, where African-Americans were lynched in the South by police officers, by the general public. It was a public spectacle. I, I'm going to suggest the, the first way is for us to, and Councilwoman Lovell and I have begun this process, to be honest with each other about racism and about white privilege. You know, because to deny it, existence reinforces that problem, right? We need to be honest with each other. We have problems here on this council with white privilege and with racism. We have problems in our city with white privilege and racism. We have problem in our country. And so I think part of it is to stop hiding the truth about this, to have public, regular conversations, and be very honest. You know, to say that there are some things that we do that are, even if we don't, when I say that racist, that you may not be a bad person, you may not hate African-Americans. But when you start a whisper campaign, when you start to attack African-Americans without proof, unfortunately, doing that is unfortunately a systematic racist act. Doesn't make you a bad person. It does make you, it does mean that you're doing something that is racist. And we have to have, I think, part of this is to have that open conversation, because people who engage in bad behavior and then hide back into their group saying, well, that's just how things are done. Well, no, it's not how things are done. It is absolutely not how things is done. It's how we have done that historically to, to vilify individual people of particularly African-American, and particularly African-American men. It is something that we do. And, and it has to stop. And I think this demonization of, of black men is part of the problem of why we see, you know, and I, my heart goes out many to your officers who are, who are in, you know, these low, these low-income communities, they're segregated, right? And they're coming from a different culture, they don't understand the culture, they don't understand the people, and they have been subject to the, you know, the demonization of black men on television and in, in movies. And so I think, I think we have to, and I didn't mean to say all this, but until we start being honest, you know, and saying out loud, some things are unacceptable. They're unacceptable in public, they're unacceptable in private, they're unacceptable, period. You know, nobody, no person, no person should be demonized. No person should be afraid of police officers, no person, male, female. And, and, and so I think, you know, I think that's part of it. Part of it is just affirming the dignity of every person. And I'm, I'm, you know, and when we see people being mistreated, it not being swept under the rug, it's, you know, how things are, no. You know, and, and so I'm, I'm sorry, that's a long diatribe. But I, I spent most of my life, most of my life, trying to help people who have been oppressed and discriminated against. And a lot of it occurs, at least in our city, because of there's a quiet acceptance that this is simply how things are done. And I'm no longer willing to accept that on any level. And I think having this, and so again, I, I think, you know, President Smith is, is probably one of the most compassionate people I've ever met, and my friend, of course, but I appreciate her sympathy. And I think there's something we can do, and that is to have this conversation publicly, over and over again. And when people do these things privately, either bring it up in public, or, or tell them privately, it's off, it's off limits, you know, all, that they're doing things that are just not right. I'm talking too much. That's what I think. Be blessed.
Can I respond to that real quickly, Councilman?
Sure.
For me?
Sure, of course.
I just want to say that I've not always been compassionate. I mean, people have taught me to. So I think sometimes having a conversation, learning and understanding more, I mean, really helps when you really sit down and talk to one another. I mean, there were times where I, I just couldn't understand some of the things that people were saying. And then, I mean, over the years, I mean, I'm older now, I've grown, I've changed, I've heard other people, what they've gone through, and I've learned from them. So I think having those conversations is so important, because it does help people understand something they haven't gone through. So I think, you know, I've once before called for a post-agenda on race in the city of Pittsburgh, and, you know, we talked about having that. So maybe we'll, maybe that's one of the things we can do, is schedule that and have some conversations, if nothing more than to start having conversations. And maybe we can help change other people and teach other people. If it's, a lot of people are teaching, still teaching me, I can't say I know it all, I couldn't be good to state it, but I did want to have the conversation. I did want people to know that we do care. We do see what's going on. And, and I usually, you know, always say there's two sides to every story, and I always oftentimes side with, you know, on the side of caution, I always, you know, try to wait and see what happens with all the details. But there's sometimes you just see things, and you just know, it just couldn't, it didn't have to be that way, shouldn't have been that way, and it's not okay to be that way. And so this is one of those cases. And so I just, I just want to say that we're watching and care. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. To both you and Rowan Burgess's point, as you may be aware, well, as you all are aware, we currently have the Commission to Create Racial Equity Legislation before council. We have not voted on that yet. When we introduced it, the mayor had 30 days to respond, which he did. He asked that we have a public conversation about the bill before voting on it. Now that we are able to hold public hearings and post-agendas via the Zoom platform, we can now move to get those scheduled. And that will be the sort of first iteration of having this conversation. That'll be our first foray into this. So I'll work with the clerk's office to begin getting that scheduled.
Sounds great. Good.
Thank you. Any other conversation from members? Seeing none, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Councilman.
Councilman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.